Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Orange High School and welcome to the West Orange Board of Education. I'd first of all like to apologize for our being late this evening. We had quite a bit to discuss. Mr. Calavano.
Roll call. Mr. Charles.
President.
Mrs. Lab.
Here.
Mrs. Mordecai.
Present.
Mr. Robertson.
Present.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum.
Yeah.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice the meeting. Please take notice. I had a quick notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on June 28, 2017. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the Lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano. May I have a motion, please, for the closed and public meeting minutes of June 26?
I'll move that.
May I have a second?
A second.
I have a comment regarding, in regard to the item number two.
One second. We're proving the minutes up the last minute.
Yeah, well, let's just, regardless of, no, it's the last minute.
Oh, okay.
On the, um...
Sure. Got to bring a few more.
In regard to, I wasn't present, but I wanted to confirm that for the insurance, did we send these out to bid?
Okay.
I'm on page 12. For the, for the general liability, for the $668,312 in insurance premiums?
Yes, our broker solicited proposals.
How many?
Um, I'm not sure, but each category he did. It was, New Jersey School Boards Insurance Group was one. It's the current ones that you see here, and there's actually one or two that actually changed from the current year.
Okay, and what did we pay last year?
I don't have that offhand.
Okay. You should ascertain.
I have, I don't have it with me, though.
Any further discussions or questions on the minutes? Roll call, Mr. Calavano.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Mrs. Lab.
Yes.
Mr. Robertson.
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum.
Um, no, we're upstate.
Upstate. No, we're upstate.
Upstate.
And President Mordecai.
Yes. Mr. Ratzke, Superintendent Report.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald is not here tonight, and I, what we're going to do is wait until September till we have our September meeting where I'm going to invite all of the Edison staff and Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Melendez to come to the meeting so we can recognize the wonderful work they have done over the last several years. In particular, the last two years, we were able to get out of focus school status. We received a letter on June 30th from Kimberly Harrington, our Acting Commissioner, who indicated that Edison Middle School is no longer in focus school status, and I just want to congratulate all of the individuals at Edison, all the supervisors, all the administrators, all the individuals who worked to get them out of focus school status. And it's, I know it's been a long journey for them and a lot of work, and, but I don't want to steal Mr. Fitzgerald's thunder, but I do want to recognize that it really is an amazing feat to get out of that. So congratulations to all those individuals at Edison. And again, we'll do something much more formal where we can invite all of them to come at the September meeting.
Okay. I'd like to add my congratulations as well, but for the purposes of the public and for folks watching at home, could you explain what the focus status means?
Sure. When, there's different categories that land schools into either a priority school or a focus school, and our situation was our highest performing subgroup versus the next two lowest performing subgroups. And when you have a gap of 45% or higher, you fall into that range of focus school status. So what it comes down to is closing that gap, and you have to do it for two years in a row. And again, this, these last two years, we've been able to do that, and it's certainly a compliment to the group at Edison. They have worked so hard, and the most important thing they've been doing is really looking at their own student data to, you know, compare how they're doing, how the students are doing, making adjustments to the daily lessons that are happening. So those, that's how we got into the focus school status. There's a lot of different ways to get into it, but that is particular to Edison.
I also had a comment on that. Matter of fact, I'm looking forward to my daughter attending Edison in the fall, and Edison has really got a lot of, a lot of progressive things going on there with the introduction, introduction of code, introduction of engineering. They're going to have a maker's space and just a lot of wonderful things happening under Mr. Fitzgerald and a really progressive staff there. I also, though, want to thank the parents who got proactively involved in 2012 and 2013. Parents, over 300 parents at Edison had come together, and they helped to bring attention to some additional things that needed to be done in terms of reading and the better utilization of the Level Reading Library, math, keeping pace in math, and the scores for Edison after the parents came together as a coalition and brought attention to these things, which Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. O'Neill at the time responded to, and along with other supervisors who got proactively involved in engaging the parents in the PTA meetings. The following year, for the first time in Edison's history, the cohort of fifth graders going into sixth grade did not see their scores fall. They saw their scores rise. So I want to thank parents for also being proactive in that effort.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Absolutely agree.
Yes, absolutely.
Under the Superintendent's Report, we are going to, we are moving the demographic study presentation to the August Board meeting. We received the document, provided to the Board, feedback from the Board to the demographer, and there'll be some final things added to it, and then we'll have it ready for presentation in August. Also, we're going to table G, which is the grading profile for grades nine through 12. That'll be ready, or that'll be presented in August as well. But I want to go ahead and, I know everybody knows that the district received a little more than 1.5 million in additional state aid, so I'm going to turn it back over to President Mordecai for the conversation about state aid.
Sure. Yes, we were notified verbally a couple weeks ago that we were going to be receiving additional state aid, and then it was confirmed about a week ago, last Monday, exactly how much we would be receiving. We've had several discussions, which is what actually held us up in closed session. We want to make sure that we thoroughly discuss exactly what should happen next with the state aid. And of course, I know everybody sees us sitting here, and you think that sometimes we all think alike, but we actually don't, and everyone has different ideas about what we could use the funds for. And I'm going to ask each of my colleagues to share exactly what their thoughts are. We've, we've discussed many things because we all have a wish list. I've been saying for years that I would love to get rid of the trailers, would love to do all kinds of things in the district, but we are very much aware that in this economy, since 2008, since the Great Depression or Great Recession, whatever you refer to it as, we know that people have been hurting, and it would be a good thing to give some of it back to the taxpayers, but we all differ in exactly what that should look like. But we are very cognizant of the fact that we have put off many repairs for district. We have many buildings that are over 100 years old. We have a athletic bubble here at the high school that not everybody may know, but pretty much every winter, depending on how heavy the snow is, the bubble goes down. And God forbid, there's a student athlete in that bubble when that happens, you know, don't even want to think about it. So that's, that's, that's a priority for me, student safety. Of course, student achievement is always number one, but the priority is always the safety of all of our children. So I'm going to start with Mr. Charles and ask him his thoughts on the state aid.
Thank you, Madam President. My thoughts are that I think we should come up with a plan or proposal that does provide tax relief to the citizens, also provides for resources and programs and safety for the children. So I'd like to see some tax relief now, go back to the taxpayers, and then also some money used for some products that we put off, some products that due to safety issues need to be addressed as well.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Mrs. Lab.
I agree with Mr. Charles. I would like to see some immediate tax relief right now, and also to hold some aside to see what issues come up, as Mr. Charles and Mrs. Mordecai had mentioned. The bubble is many years past its life expectancy. It goes down each year. We've incurred a lot of damage in the bubble that we've had to pay for when it has collapsed previously, but still, I think immediate tax relief would be welcomed. It, the thing that's a real drag about this, although I very much welcome the $1.5 million that we're getting additionally in state aid, it still does not come to the amount that we should be due, as much as I appreciate it. Also, the timing of this, as we all know who follow the budget during the budget weekend of July 4th, we received very short notice as to what exactly we would be getting and when we would be getting it, and then compounded with the town's tax bills that go out July 15th, I wish that they had considered putting this off to the third quarter so all districts across the state are not scrambling within a week to determine what to do. It's just not fair to the school districts having to make this decision when you have the town municipality knocking on your door with, what are you doing, what are you doing? And we have not even met since, I don't know, June 26th was our last meeting. So the timing really is quite problematic. I'll just leave it at that. But again, just to wind it up, I'd like to see at least a third go back to the taxpayers right now, hold it off, and perhaps use the rest for replacing our decaying infrastructure and additionally some tax relief for next year because we no longer have a bank cap.
Thank you, Mrs. Lab. Mr. Robertson.
To echo the sentiments of my colleagues on, in regard to the bubble, it is, there's a safety concern and a money concern. We pay every time it goes down, and it's absurd that every heavy snowfall and potentially if we had really high winds, it will blow over or crumble. We need a brick and mortar structure in its place at some point so we're not going through this, this annual game of chance. It's just, it's a, it's a safety hazard. At the same time, I'm acutely aware that we need to do better in terms of tax relief. We have senior citizens that are not able to age in place, and then had a couple of stories that really hit personally home recently when I found that I have two friends who love the district, have kids in our schools. One of them has actually lived here 27 years and loves this town immensely, and they not only have to move, but they're selling their homes, each of selling their homes for $100,000 loss in order, because of taxes, because they figured that they're already at $20,000 to $22,000 in taxes per year, and their taxes are going up by $1,000 every year, and they figure they'd take the loss now, go to a place where their taxes decrease by about 75 to 80%, that still have decent schools, and that they would have to make that type of life change. And that is, that's unfortunate, so we really have to address tax relief, and we need to look in the coming year as to how to do better in terms of meeting the needs that we have in our district with school, student achievement being the first goal, states, I'm sorry, safety being the first goal and student achievement being the second, but really doing a better job for our taxpayers. So tax relief has got to be part of what we do.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Mr. Schwartzbaum.
So respectfully to my fellow Board members, I disagree. I think 100% should go back to the taxpayers. Just to put things on, and how I came to this conclusion, we have $180 million budget. We approved a budget for a four and a half percent increase of, which equates to approximately $7.2 million. The business administrator and everyone here said that they certified that the budget that we approved was sufficient. Now that additional funds are coming available, those funds should be returned to the taxpayer. We have a budget that is sufficient. As of May 31st, we have in excess of $12 million in cash. The issues that I'm sure they're going to ring up are, is an issue of when tax bills go out. So that's just a cash flow, but we have the funds. We spend, we talk about that there's a need for a bubble, yet we spent $11 million on an energy savings program that was supposed to save $760,000, and we didn't, it didn't accrue, and we spent $11 million on, literally, on projects that had no real benefit. We're no brick and mortar. We put, we put timers on vending machines, which mean nothing. I think it's time that the administration, and we as a board have an obligation, that we need to be fiscally prudent. This is not about cutting programs. We've already approved every program. We approved everything. We didn't cut teachers. We're not doing anything. This is really, we have a windfall. The windfall comes in, we approved in the budget over a million dollars to put into our reserves, so now we're coming back and saying, oh, we need more. We don't need more. This money is a windfall. We should, if we had it in our original budget, we wouldn't have approved a four and a half percent increase. So therefore, I feel that we got this money, and this money should go back to the taxpayers. The budget is sufficient. We can, we've always worked within the budget, and we will. That's my opinion. Oh, and one other point. If you look at the budget, we have approximately $610,000 that we have available from last year's for the carryover.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartzbaum. A couple things I'll respond to, and then I'll turn it over to our Business Administrator, John Calavano, to respond. You will note that on tonight's bills list, attachment number nine, we are, we spend approximately anywhere between 20 and 25 million every month on our bills list, and in particular tonight, it's 26, 776, 490. So included in that is payroll and benefits are 24, almost 25 million. So respectfully disagree to some of what you've said, Mr. Schwartzbaum, and, and we did cut faculty and staff. I'm really upset that we had to do that, but if we had a million dollars in our budget during budget discussion, we might have still have had to make some cuts, but we cut over 50 faculty and staff.
If you do a very simple math, if we're at 27,000 times 12 months, it's $312 million. Our budget is not $312 million. So therefore, these are double because we're paying, we're most prob, I, I'm going to guess that payroll is more than one month because of teachers are paid, we double up. So we have sufficient. And if, the question, I would ask a very simple question. If we didn't receive this million and a half dollars, so therefore, what would we have done as a district? We would be, we'd shut the doors?
No, we would, we would continue to prioritize our expenses as we have done every month and every year, which is what we all do, you know, at home as well.
So we approved a budget two months ago knowingly? Is that what we're, we as a board are saying? We approved, and I didn't approve, but I, I voted against it, but we're saying that we approved a budget knowing that we would not have sufficient money to pay?
No, no.
That we weren't going to cover the bubble. We expected it to.
No, but that's not what, that's not what, Sandra's saying we have a $26 million. That's, the bubble has nothing to do with it.
No, no. Well, this, the 25 million here of the payroll and benefits line actually includes the retro because we, we just approved our contrast. So this also includes retro.
And we have the money banked. We have, we already had that money in. We had, the money, the money's covered through, the issue right now is a very simple thing, that the town hasn't sent out tax bills, so therefore, therefore, this million and a half dollars is not going to cover $21 million. You're still short $20 million.
I didn't say that would.
According to you, what you just said, you are short $20 million. You, a million and a half, a million and a half dollars does not cover, how do you, so how do you cover up the $20 million?
I did not say that a million dollars would cover 20 million. That was not my comment. I'm just saying that every, every month, we prioritize what the expenses are. We've known about the bubble for years, and we keep putting a Band-Aid and fixing it sufficiently so that kids are safe, but we really need to do something about it.
There's a million dollars, there's a million dollars in Fund 30.
Okay, Mr. Schwartzbaum. And, and you said we did not lay off anyone. We laid off over 50 people. Mr. Calavano, could you please respond regarding fund balance? Because my recollection is that we, we reserved 900,000.
So there's a couple, a couple points I want to make. The 609,000 that's available out of the current budget is as of May 31st, so we'll still see the June report, and you'll see that number probably less than that 600,000.
Budget. You have a line that's called encumbrances. What does encumbrances mean?
Committed purchase orders.
Okay, committed. So therefore, that, doesn't that cover, cover what you know is, is in the, in your projections?
No, not for everything. There's certain, certain categories that we pay on a monthly basis, and we don't know what that commitment's going to be for the year. So when you see the June report, you should see that number, probably less than what that 600,000 dollars. And that's really good considering that the Fund 10 budget is $142 million. Now, the other figure that you-
So the first number, the first line, there's 100, there's $45 million, $45.7 million in regular programs instructions. That's teacher salaries, is that correct?
Right, which also includes retro.
Okay, good, good. And you have $37.9 million plus $7.7 million in encumbrances. So the $105,000 that you're referring to, you're saying that you're going to have more teachers?
No.
So how do you have expenses on salaries when you're in May, when you're in May and the school year's over?
Because we have additional assignments that are sent in for class coverage, et cetera, whatever's left.
There's no more classes?
No. This is as of May. We still have June.
So you're saying, you're saying the $7.7 million doesn't cover that?
Correct. It could be, it could be a little bit higher.
Therefore, you're saying your own numbers are not correct?
No, I did not say that.
Well, I, respectfully, respectfully, I run budgets, I've done budgets, I have my CPA, so now let's go through. I have my CPA, my MBA. Okay, I could tell you this, that when you put down numbers on a piece of paper, as a business administrator, you put down what your projections are. So if you're saying the projections are right or wrong-
Right. These projections are based on salary. These are not based on extra assignments. I have no idea how many teachers have, will be covering class coverages for individual schools. I don't get to see that until I get the actual timesheet or substitute teachers.
What was it last month?
I don't know offhand. I'll have to look.
Come on, you, you're, you're 10 months into the year and you don't know?
No, I don't know that.
What's the average?
Okay. And going back to the-
Or, or respectfully, it's like every question I ask, you'll get back to me, and you never do.
I disagree with you.
It's fine, it's fine. So we'll, we'll agree to disagree whether the $609,000 is, this is a budget, here we are towards the end of the year, okay, and this budget, this budget has, has $609,000 in, in available. Okay, fine.
And the $11 million in cash, again, is as, as of May 31st, and you remember, we paid retro in June for '15, '16, and '16, '17. So when June 30th comes, you'll see a lot lower of a figure.
Okay, I, I concur, but I think there's sufficient cash. Did you run out, so now, did you run out a cash flow, a projected cash flow?
Yes.
Okay, can I see it?
Sure.
Okay, good. And you're saying we're short on cash?
We will be short in cash for July because-
Because of what?
We have two tax payments that are due from the township that they cannot send to me.
And how much is that going to be?
I, I believe it's $11 million per tax payment.
So are you saying that you're not going to be able to pay teachers?
Uh, no, teachers don't work in the summertime.
But how are you going to pay them if you don't have the cash?
So it's not teachers. It's what, we're going to be paying the 12-month employees in the summer, and I'm going to have to hold bills. So we, on our next bills list, we will pay bills, but I'll have to hold them, and I'll hold them until that payment comes from the township, and then I can release them.
I believe it's 11.6 million.
So if I take some quick numbers, $180 million, 85, 85%, so only 15% isn't, is non, it's $27 million. You have $27 million divided by 12, that's only $2.5 million, $2.2 million a month in outside of payroll and benefit expenses. So how do you come up with $20 million that you're going to, you don't have that much to save?
No, I didn't say I need $20 million. I said that I'm going to have to, I have a sufficient fund to pay for payroll for the summer months. Then the next bills list, if I don't receive payment from the township, either one of those payments, I'll have to hold that bills list until I have sufficient funds to release.
So, so is it fair to say that if you get, if we approve, we approve the, the amounts going in to, to the taxpayer, and then we get our tax revenue, you'll have sufficient cash? The issue, the issue is a cash flow issue of when will the town remit the tax payments?
Right, when they collect it, and they haven't submitted the tax bills yet. They haven't sent out the tax bills.
So either way, whether we, this million and a half dollars is not relevant to when you get your cash?
I never talked about the one and a half million dollars for cash flow. I just wanted to alert the Board that, you know, because of the tax bill's being held.
So there's two, so let's be clear, there are two very distinct decisions that need to be made. One is a cash flow issue, which you're saying, correct me if I'm wrong, that we have the township bills, the township collects and remits funds to the district, and that is in the tune of, I believe, 11 million, approximately $11 million a month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. So now what you're saying is that once that happens, you'll have cash?
I'll have sufficient cash, yes.
Okay, good. There's a separate and distinct decision that needs to be made in regard to this million and a half dollars. One has nothing, let's not confluence two decisions. They are independent decisions, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so therefore, once the township, once a decision is made here in regard to the treatment of this million and a half dollars, whether it's zero, going back to the taxpayers, or a million and a half dollars, at that juncture, the town will, the town will send out tax bills and will collect remittances from taxpayers and remit to the, to, to the district. That, what you're saying is, given that we have a 30-day lag now, we're going to have a cash flow issue?
Yes.
Either way.
And the township will have probably a cash flow issue.
Okay, good, good. But now this million and a half dollar, this million and a half dollars is independent. It is not a dependent decision. It is, you're, you're respectfully commingling two decisions that should not be commingled, very distinct decisions.
I didn't commingle it.
Okay, therefore, we have, the million and a half dollars can go back to the taxpayers. There's, you have a cash flow issue, not, not related to the million and a half dollars state aid. It's an independent occurrence. It's an, there are independents and dependents. This is an independent item.
I have a suggestion. Why doesn't one of us make a motion as to what we should actually be, what our decision's going to be in terms of what goes back to the taxpayers and what we, what we keep? Then it can go into discussion as to the rationale, and then we could vote.
There's a resolution on the addendum.
Right, I'm suggesting we get to the resolution.
Okay, that's later on. This is a part of the Superintendent's Report.
Real quick, the 1.5, what does that, what does that equate to tax relief for the town?
For the average home, approximately $40, 40, 40 or 47 dollars.
Forty, like 44, 40, 40, 44 or 47, I don't remember.
$47 per household.
And what would the adjusted increase be if it went back to the taxpayers instead of four and a half percent?
What do you mean?
It's, there are two pieces to any, we, there's the average of $40, but our budget, the budget that we approved increased the average taxpayer by four and a half percent. So therefore-
It was like 200 and-
So if someone is paying, in your example, your friend who's paying $20,000 in taxes, it's $1,000. Someone who's paying five, $5,000 in taxes, it would only be $250.
Right.
It's very, very difficult. This, we, we're caught up in the averages, but like everything else is arranged.
So let me give you the figure then. On a home assessed at $338,000, you would save $47.33.
$47.33, which equates to what percentage?
It's about a 21% savings.
Therefore, it would equate to about a three and a half percent increase versus a four and a half percent increase. And of course, the living environment, that's less than two percent.
Mr. Charles, you were making a comment, are, were you finished?
I had a question and Mr. Calavano has answered it, please. I just wanted to know what the one point five equates to dollar-wise for the average staff.
For a household?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, forty-seven, thirty-three. Okay. Okay. Continuing with your superintendent's report, Mr. Retske.
Okay, just a couple of quick things. Preschool update, I met with preschool teachers today. Dr. Plauer and I met with them just to kind of check in. They asked to share a few things and they did and we kind of gave them an update from our end. We are with the board, as you know, we are still going back and forth with the church on trying to finalize the lease agreement. I think we're close. Once we are close, everything else will fall into place. Obviously, we're hoping that it does work out. The name has come up as far as the Betty Madalena Early Learning Center, which is very respectful to, to Betty and those that knew her and her reputation. And then, all the other pieces will fall into place. Our, our goal is to be able to be in by August 1st. We're not sure that's going to happen, but we still have time to get everything moved over for our teachers. We were talking to them today about some different things and one of the things that came up was the idea of the teacher getting paid to come in for a day to pack their things up. Now, this is not something that happens on a regular basis, but because they are not notified during the school year, this is something I would recommend we do and make sure that it's clear that, you know, this would not set any kind of precedent as far as moving forward. But, because it's their things in preschool, if you've, you know, been in preschool, you know that they have a lot of things. And they want to make sure they get packed properly and labeled properly and delivered properly, things of that nature. So, I would hope that we would go ahead and we could do an, a, an informal agreement tonight that they could be paid for that and then we would have them on the agenda and the August meeting to approve them. Now, the only other thing that I wanted to discuss with you about the preschool is the opportunity to possibly have them start a couple of days later than everybody else. Now, the downside to this is obviously the parents, that, that's the downside. But because this is the first year and because we have this little issue that we're still working through the summer, they do need time to set up their rooms. And, and so, we don't need an answer tonight, but I do want to make you aware that's something that we're going to see how things progress and we may need to have the conversation. Now, some of the other things that are going to fall in place here are obviously who we're naming to be the administrator for that facility and then the outreach to all of our parents inviting them in, welcoming them to the new facility. All those things that we know need to happen will be our next steps. Right now, we need to get this lease agreement done. We'll get it back to them tomorrow and for their feedback and, and hopefully, we can close this in the next few days and, and be done with it. As far as the lease agreement, what we can do on this is, they can come to you individually and we can talk individually and if you are satisfied with the language in the contract, President Mordecai, you would sign it, they would sign it and then we would retroactively approve it at the August meeting. That way, we could take, take ownership of it for August. With, with all of you approving it, with me individually and then you signing off on it, then we can go ahead and retroactively approve it. Then everything can fall into place after that. All right, so that's kind of an update where we are. And again, we're, we're working, we have the security issue that we want to take place, you know, for the public. We want to make sure that the doors all have access cards for them, meaning that I would have a card, I can use my card to get in, but all doors would be locked, no access to getting to any of the classrooms or any of the offices in that facility. So, that's one of the biggest pieces we have to do in August. And again, we're just waiting for that agreement to be done. Once that's done, all those things will start happening immediately.
Okay, thank you. I know we've looked at it a few times and probably need to look at it a couple more times, but you did mention that you're going to invite the parents in. Will you have a formal or informal open house for parents to come in or new parents, existing parents?
We, we plan to have the parents come in in August to see it prior to school starting and then there would be no difference in what we do with every other school, back-to-school night, you know, things of that nature. And, and really trying to have the parents be welcomed there, create the PTA, make sure that, that everything is exactly like it is right now at Kelly.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Lab?
Just a couple of questions, Mr. Retske. Are the preschool children required to have a hundred and eighty days as are the upper classmen, if you will?
They are not. So, if we started a couple of days later, that requirement does not apply to the preschool students.
Okay. When you talk about security upgrades, I just wanted to confirm that there will also be additional cameras in the parking lot. You had mentioned that, that also will happen in the month of August, is that correct?
It will. We're going to install all of the, the cameras on the, the two main doors, making sure the access cards are in place, making sure the cameras have the parking lot lit up. So, all of that, we already have everything ready to go. Again, we're just waiting for the agreement to, to be finalized.
Okay, and then finally, one of the initiatives or one of the things behind this besides just the space issue is to give the children with the self-contained classes K through five the opportunity to be in the same school like any other child K through five. But additionally, those teachers now, instead of teaching two grades in a classroom, they will teach one grade. So you're moving five, three from, could you just talk about what you're moving and what's going on?
Sure, the LLD classes, yes. So, we would have three of them coming, three LLD classes coming over from Gregory and two from Redwood. They would be in, in Kelly. And yes, then we would have them located. So, the, the beautiful thing about that is that the students do, that are in the LLD class would be in the same hallway, the same location as the general education students. And that's key, that's really important. So we have that opportunity for the kids to be working together and also the, the ability for some co-teaching to happen and, and students to be able to mainstream into the Gen Ed. So yes, that's definitely one of the pluses.
Okay, so they'll be with Mrs. X for first grade, Mrs. Y for second grade, but again, the classes will not be combined with one classroom with a teacher teaching multiple grades as we currently have right now.
Right now, we have a setup where it's K one, two, three, and then four, five.
Right.
And one of the things I've heard over the last couple of years is how challenging that is and this alleviates that challenge. And, and I would agree that that's a much better opportunity for the teachers and the students to be successful with the students being in one grade level.
Okay, now also on the flip side, obviously, the parents or the children who are currently in Redwood and in Gregory, we have not been able to reach out to those parents because everything was contingent upon having this contract signed. So, once this contract is signed, I imagine the administration will be expediting those parent groups and children to what will be happening then.
They will and, and the child study teams are just waiting for the okay to make sure that, that the IEPs are amended properly, working with the parents. There, there's been a lot of discussion in the community about it because it's not a secret.
Right.
But we still have things that we have to do legally, but also, we want to be respectful to our parents who are moving to a new school and help them with that transition, et cetera.
Okay, and just to follow up, I know, Ms. Mordecai had asked about the preschool parents coming in and, you know, having an open house and stuff like that, but I think because we'll be naming the building after Betty, we would have a formal opening to the community, Betty's family and friends and do something along those lines.
No question about it. It's a, it's a very big celebration and it's a wonderful opportunity. So yes, that's definitely going to happen.
Okay, I have no more questions, Ms. Mordecai. Thank you, Mr. Retske.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments regarding the preschool? Sure, Mr. Charles.
Since it's a house of worship, can you address the issue of the separation of the public schools versus the, the house of worship?
Sure. One of the things that can happen is that we have items that are related to the, the church in particular. So we've been working with the folks and making sure that's part of the language. So, when we're using it, obviously, there's, there's no items visible, available, that they're either put away or completely covered up. And then the same thing with us when they're using it on their weekends for, for whatever they're doing, their Sunday schools, our items would be protected as well and, and if, if they need to be put somewhere, they will, we will do that. That's still one of the final issues that we're working on right now, but clearly, the separation is very important.
Okay, that's all I have.
Mr. Retske, you also had mentioned an administrator, but just to confirm, this school will also have a nurse and a custodian, correct?
It will, yes, full-time nurse and custodian down there, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Retske.
We, for a few years, have been running negative as far as our meal account balance, meaning that, so I'm a student and I forgot to bring my lunch money, the student is permitted to charge, whether it's breakfast or lunch, whatever he or she would like to have. And we are working with the administrators to continue to work with the parents to try and collect those balances. But unfortunately, we're in the tune of almost twenty-nine thousand dollars over the ten schools. Now, the high school does not have the ability to charge, so the high school is not part of this. So it's, it's K through eight. Some of the schools, some of the principals do a phenomenal job working with the parents to, to collect that money and, and others aren't quite as successful. So, one of the things that has just come out, which I will share with you, is a board policy that has to do with school meals. And so what I'd like to do is, you know, just talk a little bit about this negative balance we have and we all have to realize, and I know all of you do, that we have some financial challenges that we have to be respectful to and we have to help those families through that. The most important thing for students is making sure they're getting the nutrition they need, while also, those individuals that have the money to pay and just aren't paying, those are the ones that we need to make sure that we're collecting the money from. But, you know, it's a delicate balance in trying to work with all the parents to, to collect that back pay. Mr. Calavano's heavily involved in it, as is Mr. Krauser, our director for the food services. And I wanted to bring it to your attention because, you know, that's twenty-nine thousand dollars that, you know, it's just a lot of money. It's just a lot of money. So again, trying to make sure the students are fed and, and healthy while also trying to collect that money and work with parents. And the last piece is, we're, we're trying to encourage parents to go ahead and complete the free and reduced lunch application. The worst thing that can happen is that they get denied and the best thing that can happen is they get accepted and then they help themselves and most importantly, they help their child who can be fed breakfast and lunch as needed. So, Ms. Lab, I'll turn this policy over to you.
Thank you. Just if my colleagues can read this, there's a couple of options in the policy. If you can get back to me as to which ones you would like as far as recouping payment or demanding payment. And just so the public is aware, the majority of the twenty-nine thousand dollars that is owed to the district is from those paying full price, not reduced price. So, I just thought that should be noted. But again, this is hot off the press from school boards and if you guys could just read this, we'll put it on for first reading in August and then we'll go from there because there are a couple of decisions in this policy that just need to be finalized amongst us, okay? Now, okay, thank you.
Okay, and then lastly, just a reminder, the survey for the special education, parents for the special ed, excuse me, the survey for parents for the special education audit, please feel free to go on the website, it's there, you can, you know, take the survey. We want all the feedback that is possible. We know it's difficult timing in the summertime, we're going to do the best we can. There's also meetings that the consultants will be holding with groups of parents that would like to come out and attend that meeting and provide the feedback, by all means, they can do that. And, and then lastly, I'm working with our leadership team on the CPAC committee, trying to set up a meeting so we can talk about, that they can have the opportunity to meet with the consultant and provide some individual feedback to him and, and to the woman who's helping as well. So, that's all I have tonight.
Mr. Retske, do you know how many parent meetings there will be for the special ed audit?
I think there's two. And those dates will be shared once the consultant gives them to us. We just, we know that it's difficult in the summertime, but we're going to do the best we can.
Okay.
Mr. Retske, was the CPAC group made privy to the questionnaire before it went out so they could have input?
They, they were not. The issue is that we, I was trying to work with Ellen on that and we weren't able to get together because it was the very end of the year and it was very challenging. So, that's why we're going to give them the opportunity to sit down and talk directly to the consultant who's doing what they got to do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, now it's time for questions from the public on agenda items. If you have a comment or a question about an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, do we get six minutes?
And, and the visitor.
Sue Freeval, Ten Ridge Avenue. And Finn. I think my theme for this tonight is, it's very difficult over the summer. The preschool plan, doing this over the summer, especially if you're starting school a couple of days late, we're talking daycare, we're talking plans for spec ed kids, this is not the time to do this. We're talking about amending IEPs over the summer with all of these families. I have no problem with moving the preschool program out. I have a lot of reasons to think that moving the self-contained classes out of Gregory is probably a good idea. I do not think it's a good idea to do this over the summer. What's disturbing to me is that some people knew that this move was going to be made long before this came out to the public. The space was being shown by Connie Salambeino, people in early intervention knew that this was going to be placement for next year and this is before you guys have even made a decision. So, I'd like to know if the board is truly open-minded on this and what bids you got, what are all the costs going into this? Apparently, the lease is going to be completely out of the public's eye. It was on the attachments tonight, you're all going to go over it individually, we're never going to see it. So I'd really like to know all the costs involved in this and why this has to happen over the summer. If you guys knew you were going to do this earlier in the year, you should have rolled it out earlier in the year instead of hiding it over the summer months. And if you didn't know until the summer months, then you should wait a year. Do it properly, talk to the Gregory and Redwood parents. Same thing with the survey. Why is this happening over the summer? It could easily wait until the school year starts, there's no rush on this. As it is, this, this whole entire audit had to get put off because the first firm that you chose went out of business weeks after you gave them a contract. Now, we're paying ten thousand dollar more to another firm, why are we doing this over the summer? It's a waste of our money. And especially with, you know, I'd like to know what other sites we're seeing, there's no gym. As far as I know, the Life Christian Church once advertised daycare services but was never licensed by the state. So I'd like to understand exactly what's going on with the use of the space, why it's a five-year lease, why it has to start now instead of waiting for next year, why this is getting done over the summer and all of the costs involved. Because one of the points against St. Joe's was supposedly that we had to pay for a lot of the costs. But it sounds like we're going to be paying for security, we're going to be paying for upgrades. So if we're paying for that anyway, I'd really like to know what written proposals you guys saw for the other sites and why this one won. And I'd like to know if the public will get to see a copy of the lease in an attachment or anywhere else before you guys approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Freeval. Anyone else? Mr. Retske.
As I indicated, yes, this has been in the works, but unfortunately, this was not able to move forward because it was all contingent on the contract. The contract, as we know, didn't end until, or yeah, didn't get finalized until June and we've been going full steam since then. As far as, you know, bids and lease and, and things over the summertime, we're not trying to hide anything over the summer, it's just the timing of the contract that caused all of, all of this to happen. The, the issue of paying for security and upgrades, it is minimal to places like St. Joe and others that the board has looked at prior to. The, the facility is brand-new, it is, it is up to code on state standards. It is, it is up to code on state standards. As far as never being approved by the state, we have to get approval from the county superintendent, the county business administrator, and the state, which we have all three of those. So it has met the standards. And the county superintendent informed us early last week that that information will be coming to us formally because of the condition. It is a brand-new facility. It was built for preschool students and kindergarten students for their own use of their families. They have not been able to get it off the ground, and we are very excited to have such an opportunity to have a brand-new facility that is state-of-the-art and only needs to have simple things like the security upgrades. The, everything else is there and needed. But as far as a waste of money, I would disagree with that. The facility is beautiful. Those that have visited have seen it, they think it's really wonderful. As far as the public seeing the lease, there's no problem with the public seeing the lease, there's no issue whatsoever. It's a contract. When the contract's approved, obviously, it's available.
Mr. Rutske, if you could just speak to, I mean, I know we've been looking at various spaces over the last several years, and I may miss a couple, but I know we looked at Suburban Hills, we looked at St. Joe's, we looked at a space on Harrison Avenue. Could you just talk about the various spaces that we've looked at and?
Sure. And the most recent one being St. Joe's. We were talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars just to bring it, and more above the $500,000, to bring it just up to code, which would allow us to have children in there. And then we were talking about renovations that needed to happen. It was not handicap accessible, so we had to do different things, as consider putting an elevator in or other options to have students be able to use the first floor and the second floor, et cetera. So the overall cost to just bring that facility up to code and make it amenable for kids to use, that had nothing to do with the cost of renting or leasing the facility. So we were talking about a lot of money for that piece. I was not part of Suburban Hills, but I understand that it was on the market and off the market, and we missed that opportunity, I'm not sure. But there are, there are not a lot of facilities. This is still in West Orange, and that's a real plus. I know that the county superintendent informed Mr. Calavano and I of what a wonderful find that was, that school districts are looking for these kinds of facilities, and they actually have to go out of town. And for us to find one in West Orange in the condition, the brand-new condition, and he was, he was very impressed with that.
Yes. Mrs. Freeval. The other sites that we looked at a number of years ago was the Community House, which was not appropriate for our needs. Also not being handicapped accessible. I remember when I went on a tour there, they had like a dumbwaiter, like one person gets in there, and then you got to a landing, and then there were steps to go down, which was kind of crazy. We did look at the Suburban Hills, a cup, twice actually. There was extensive cost for renovation for Suburban Hills to meet our needs, but then our next attempt to acquire this fell through. St. Joseph's, I remember, that was close to a million dollars for renovation for a property which was not ours. And then as Ms. Mordecai indicated, there was another site on Harrison Avenue. I forgot the name of the little, there's a little preschool across from Washington School. I forgot the name of it, Le Jardin or something maybe? But it was much too small for our needs. So those were the sites that we had looked at.
And it's important to note that what a private school can do as far as a rental or lease is very different than a public school. We have a very different set of codes we have to live by and meet. So it's much more expensive for a public school to take over a building than it is for a private.
Okay. Next on the agenda, I have special education policy listed again. And I have that listed because the public had requested some more time to make comments. Even though we have, we had this policy on before for first reading and second reading, there are many people in the public who wanted to make more comments, and I believe my colleague as well, Mr. Robertson, also asked that it be placed back of the agenda, and so did Mr. Charles. So if anyone in the audience has a comment on the special education policy, which, you know, we've had for first and second reading over a couple months ago, please come forward.
Sue Freeval, Ten Ridge Avenue again. The reason that this was put back on the agenda is because when you guys approved it the first time, there'd only been proofreading done up to the first seven pages. There were major errors here. And I know people on the board talked about, oh, we can't change words because words matter. And I think you'll remember, Mr. Schwartzbaum, I pointed out, the policy actually misquoted the code in ways that changed the code. This is why words matter, otherwise I wouldn't care what you approved or didn't approve. It was supposed to be on the board to go over this policy and look at what further mistakes were in it. So I'd like to think that you all did, but I take it that you have not. There are still errors in it, even still in pages one through seven, as well as eight through 20, which were not fixed. The only reason some of them were fixed in pages one through seven is because I sent that information to the board. As far as I know, those are the only errors that were fixed. Furthermore, there's language that we used to have in our policy about unnecessary labeling of special-needs students. And I know this was brought to the board's attention because there was a violation of this policy back in May. And I'd like to know if the board took any action on that violation, and also if the board has answered apparent concerns as to why this section has been eliminated from our policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Freeval. Thank you, Mrs. Freeval.
Okay. I believe there's an opportunity online as well for additional questions or comments on the policy. If anyone would like to actually go on Wobo, you can make comments and questions online and so that we can respond completely to any questions. May I have a motion, please, for personnel one through, one through four?
I'll move that.
Let me just double-check. Including the addendum? May I have a second?
So including, you're including?
Including number four.
The miracles for the superintendent?
I was going to include them. We can have a discussion.
Mr. Rutske's correct.
You'd like them to be tabled, okay. Okay. So we'll be tabling number four under personnel, and this will be inclusive of the addendum. And that is one, three, on the addendum as well. May I have a second, please?
Just to clarify, it's one, two, and three.
Yes. Tabling four, and inclusive of the addendum, which is one and three as well. May I have a second, please?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? There's a motion on the floor.
I'll second.
I'll sec, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion by the board?
None.
Madam President, just a follow-up. We are tabling number four.
Number four has been tabled.
Okay.
Mr. Calavano, roll call.
Mr. Charles?
Yes. Now we're tabling number four, yes, everything.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes. I'd like to, I think I saw retirement. Maybe it's on the addendum. I'd like to congratulate, yes, there's a retirement, Gail Lauderbach. It's always sad to see your, our great staff go, but congratulations on retirement to Gail Lauderbach of Kelly School. May I have a motion, please, for curriculum and instruction?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion by the board?
I just want to say that another year we have the Confucius Grant, so that continues to uprise our Chinese program.
Particularly as we're expanding it now to include the sixth grade.
Yep. And we have a, one of the premier programs in the country. We actually have students who are studying in programs in China for Ivy League schools, for NYU, et cetera, and it's really quite a prestigious program.
Yes, it is.
Can you just clarify what the, item number six, bilingual data submission waiver?
Every district, if you have more than 20 students in the district that speak a language other than, other than English, are required to have a bilingual program. They give some exemptions, and the exemption that we filed for is our more than 20 are spread out across the elementaries. So it's not economically feasible for us to provide bilingual instruction in every content area in every school, because we have in some schools three or four students, some schools 15. And so then we provide a waiver to the state of New Jersey expressing that. This year, we've applied for a waiver in both Spanish and Creole, because we do have now 20, more than 20 students in both languages. However, they're not all in one location where we could provide a full bilingual program.
Okay, I'd just like to say that it's great to see that we are approving an affiliation agreement with Caldwell University for student teaching. I know we always have students from Montclair State and Bloomfield. It's always good to get students from other schools as well.
I'm sorry, can I be joined? I just wanted to follow up with you with our discussion on FDU. Have you had an opportunity to speak to them?
We did. We reached out. We let them know that if there were any students interested, that we'd like to enter into a partnership. The person who was in charge of that was on vacation last week, but they will be back this week. We have it in writing and a phone call.
Okay. Because, Mr. Rutske, we have a partnership with FDU where they come in and provide professional development with the graduates, their graduate school, I believe.
We have the partnership for the Orton-Gillingham program, where we have, we, they teach us on-site in central office. So yes, we already have a partnership with FDU.
Okay, so getting some students, and it would be a nice touch, too.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
That would be good. Mr. Rutske, for item eight, for the code.org training, is that also open to other districts, and are we able to recoup any revenue?
Yes, to both. It's open to others, and yes, we can, we can receive revenue from those other districts.
Okay. Actually, I met a friend of a friend who's a librarian in, I think, Passaic, and she takes part in this, and she was telling me how wonderful this program was, and how much she's getting out of it. Yeah, so it was nice to hear. It was kind of a random conversation, actually.
Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes. May I have a motion for finance and including item number five as amended? And tabling item 11, which is the lease agreement, which we're still working on.
I'll move that.
Thank you. Any discussion, any second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion by the board?
Item number 10, in regard to the regulatory compliance for environmental consultant, consulting services at Standage Avenue Bus Garage. Have we conducted a phase one and phase two environmental study on this to see whether we have any, any soil and underground contamination?
I am not sure about that. This is the second phase that we've been working with partners so we can get the DEP to give us the okay that everything's fine.
But we should, just in real estate, in the private sector, since land is land, we should make sure that we have given, we should try to ascertain if a phase one and phase two has been conducted, and whether they did any bore testing and other groundwater testing.
Okay.
Item number 13, in regard to the auditors, what did we, did they charge last year?
It's, there's no increase, it's $72,000. And it's $72,000 for the three years that I asked for proposals for.
Okay.
Mr. Calavano, item number nine with the stale-dated checks. I know every year we get this item with stale-dated checks from the student activities account. I know you met with the, the parents and PTA about stale-dated checks and what happens with the student activities account. Will you be doing that again in the fall? And I'm just looking at this amount for $24.65. I believe you told me this is a restaurant, but?
Yeah. We, you know, it's, if individuals or parents don't want to cash the checks, it becomes outdated, and then we have to cancel them. If they come back to us afterwards and they really would like the refund or the bill paid, we'll pay it.
Okay.
Because the money goes right back into the account.
Thank you.
Just one other item. I just want to read statement number three, because I think it's important. It's secretary's report acceptance and certification. It says, recommend that the West Orange Board of Education accept the board's secretary's financial report for the month of May 2017 based upon the certification of the board's secretary pursuant to NJAC 6A 23A-1610C3, that no major account or funds have been overextended, extended, expended, and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year. So, I mean, we're making a statement, a positive statement, that we have sufficient cash. And that the board's approving it.
Finance also includes the addendum. So letter B under business office number 15, we have a blank space to approve any amount that, of the additional state aid that we would like to be used for property tax relief. I know many of my colleagues expressed that. Mrs. Lab, you said a third. I believe, Mr. Charles, you also wanted to give back. Are you in agreement with a third, or do you have a proposal? Mr. Robertson?
I believe we should get $1 million back and keep the $500,000 and change for other things, but I think we should give a million back to the taxpayers.
Okay. Mr. Schwartzbaum?
I think we should give the entire million and a half dollars back to the taxpayers.
As much as I would like to give everything back, I know we discussed earlier our obligations for safety and security and, and other items. I would, I will agree with my colleagues in that a third, giving back a third would be fiscally prudent. And if, if there comes a time later in the year when we've, when we've looked at our balances and we've, we've approved all the expenses and there's anything left, it would be nice to revisit and return some of these funds. But I do agree, at this time, to give a third back. So right now, we have three votes to give back $500,000.
For complete transparency, should we be discussing, we mentioned the bubble. Shouldn't we mention what the other things those two-thirds are going towards?
Yes.
Because the bubble should not be a brick-and-mortar structure to house a weight room, essentially. I don't believe that should be more than a quarter of a million, but that's just me.
Well, we mentioned the bubble, we mentioned supervisor, the world language supervisor.
And I want to comment on that. That should not have been, I was not even aware that that was somehow all of a sudden unfunded when we approved the budget, because it was a position that already existed. unfunded when we approved the budget, because it was a position that already existed. I do not recall saying cut that from the budget, so that somehow got lost in the fine print. It's one of our most important positions, and Ms. D'Amendis had just presented a pretty phenomenal vision plan for what to do with that department. It was totally impressive, so I don't know why all of a sudden that position disappeared.
Actually, it did not all of a sudden disappear. It was throughout all the documentation, we were losing two supervisors, one in the Buildings and Grounds Department and one, the World Language, so-
Never approved World Language, never, 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 never would have.
Well, actually, we did-
It was not clear.
There were three-
It was not clear.
There were three budget scenarios.
Yeah.
And in each of them, we were losing the World Language Supervisor.
No, never approved that.
All right, I'm not going to argue, but it was-
Let's go over, the proposals then, we have our 1.5, all of it going back, one million going back, and then we have-
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand. To Mr. Robertson's point, I don't know the exact figures. Certainly, I'm not, you know, a construction person or little, but I know that the bubble or the construction facility of that area is going to cost more than two or three hundred thousand. Just knowing from being around athletic directors and speaking to some of the people who've had it installed, it ranges anywhere between twelve to twenty dollars a square foot, so. But we're not here to hackle for a few dollars right now, but I just think that the, by giving some back to the taxpayer today, that gives them some tax relief. The other third, putting, in case we need it, for tax relief for next year, next year's budget, and then the other third for projects, for resources that we need, I think is a compromise furthermore.
I agree. It's crucial to find the balance, and I think that's what we're doing here tonight. And as you said, we can revisit when we finish the school year, what we have left, if we can give additional funds back to the taxpayers. But, you know, we have a lot to work, we have a lot to do, and we're not sure if we're going to have the luxury next year, and it would be nice not to raise taxes next year.
Just to confirm, Mr. Calavano, we currently have no bank cap for next year?
Great. Thank you.
One other question in that regard. Did we ever get a report, I'd asked about at the last meeting, on where we were in terms of what we were pitching for fund development, how much money we're pitching, closing rate projected, and what, and the outline of what it was being pitched for? What were our financial goals for fund development?
We're working with the group we had last year, and they have contacted us in the summertime to sit down and really talk about the needs, so I think that'd be more appropriate for the August meeting or very early in September.
So we didn't apply for grants already?
No, we have, and that's what they're working with us on, what the vision should be, and I think that would be more appropriate to do it that way.
What did we apply for? I guess, my question was, what have we already done? What, how much money was it for? What did we actually apply for? The company that we work with, that's a partner with NJASBA, New Jersey School Boards, had, from the very beginning, from when I first spoke to them two years ago, talked about a fifty percent closing rate, so I wanted to really be able to see what are we going for in terms of grants? How much is the grant money? Projected closing rate? Then that leads to project the dollars closed that we'd actually bring in.
We will share that with you next meeting.
Thank you.
We also, you had identified, I believe there were twenty-five aides that were unassigned. Can we make sure that everyone who has an IEP and is assigned an aide has one, and to the extent that we have excess aides that we don't just pay people for sitting around? I think that's very important. So, am I correct that you had in the initial, there was somewhere between twenty-five to thirty people?
I don't remember the exact number. I don't think it was that high, Mr. Schwartzbaum, but I know that the department has been working diligently to make sure that we know who's assigned to who and what child needs, whether it's a shared aid or an individual aid. So yes, there is, everybody is assigned to a student who needs the aid.
Can you give us a report?
Yeah, we'll find out how many we had projected in the budget and where we are right now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Calavano, roll call?
We are voting on finance, including the addendum, finance B, number fifteen.
First of all, you had to make a motion for the specific amount.
The motion was made for the whole thing, for the entire finance. It was motion, there was a motion, it was seconded, and we just had discussion.
So what amount, what amount are we looking at?
That's what I'm-
Five hundred thousand.
Can I make a suggestion?
We should separate them.
That we separate them?
Sure, we'll separate it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Okay. Okay, so we're voting then on the finance items, one through?
Fourteen.
One through fourteen, with number five amended, and pulling number eleven.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes. Now we need a motion for finance item number fifteen to approve five hundred thousand dollars from the 2017, 2018 additional state aid to be used for 2017, 2018 property tax relief.
I'll second.
We've discussed it, but if anyone has another comment they'd like to make? Okay, okay. Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
No, it's too little.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
No.
President Mordecai?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that, that we set aside the money and revisit pursuant to President Mordecai's statement that we're going to look at it, so I'd like to make a motion that we put back on the agenda in December, whether we have sufficient funds to give back to the taxpayers.
Motion to review it in December?
I'll move that.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Motion to make second, and any discussion? So it's a motion to review?
And a motion to review-
The balance in December to determine whether or not there are sufficient funds to return to the taxpayer.
Additional funds.
Additional funds. Roll call, Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
No. Oh, this one, sorry, yes. My apologies. Need more sleep.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes. May I have a motion, please, for reports? You have a second? HIB?
There is none.
Yes, but I thought we were approving.
So you second?
Second. Last meeting was fine.
It's on the agenda.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab? Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
I'll stay, I wasn't here.
And President Mordecai?
Yes.
Okay, now it's time for report from board president and any board members. If you have an item to report, please do so now.
Stop the time, all quiet.
Okay, all right, thank you. The next- The next meeting will be held on August 21st here at West Orange High School at eight o'clock, and now it's time for petitions and hearings from the residents. If you have a question or comment, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there's a clock with three minutes to allow everybody some time to speak.
Sue Freeval, 1022, let's make it three for three. Very quickly, on number five, recommended approval contract with Buzz 1441, Inc. I'd like to know exactly what the enhanced communication services are, because it was never fully explained last year when we approved it. And I think we're also paying upwards of forty thousand dollars for communications director, so I'd like to know what the duties of that position are and how this fifteen thousand dollar contract adds to this. It's only almost sixty thousand dollars for spending in communication alone. I'd like to know exactly what that entails. I kind of agree with Mr. Schwartzbaum. If the bubble is such a safety issue, then why wasn't already addressed in the budget? If this money hadn't come in, then you're basically saying you guys would have been irresponsible, leaving the bubble not replaced. So now suddenly it's urgent. I'm kind of, I'm kind of with you there. But moving on, I can figure out how you can save some money, which is to not pay extra for teachers to come in and move their classrooms, and to not pay extra for the child study team to fix IEPs now, but to do this in the normal IEP process during the school year and leave this move until next year. You have parents of three schools that don't yet know that their kids are going to go to a different school. Ms. Mordecai and Ms. Lab may remember a time under Dr. Cavanna when the board refused to change the calendar a year in advance. A year in advance, there's a request to change the school calendar, and the board refused because, and I quote, "People had already bought plane tickets for their vacations a year in advance." Now you're asking in late July that sometime in August, parents are going to be brought in to be shown new placements, parents are going to be told that school is starting several days later, and these are kids who are not easy to find care for, and you're doing this all in late July. There's no reason to rush this. It is a good idea, but let's do it correctly and let's not rush it over the summer. And I'm sure I had something else, but I think someone else needs my attention. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rutske?
As far as the services for number five, that contract is for Barry Pashkov, Bashkov, excuse me, to really focus on the social media aspect. We also have Cynthia Cummings who's doing something completely different as far as her coverage of all the wonderful things that go on around the district. So I can give you an understanding of what includes daily monitoring, programming of profiles, posting, interaction, clients, setting parameters, covering current events, twenty-four seven breaking news messaging, forty-eight hour response, incoming messaging, ongoing graphic creation, video creation, social interaction, relevant pages, social media profiles, and PR, working obviously with Cynthia, students, administrators, et cetera, to make sure that communication, we always want to try to improve our communication. So that is a twelve-month contract at fifteen thousand, excuse me, fifteen hundred per month, equaling eighteen thousand per year. We know how important communication is in timely and immediate communication, so those are some of the things. Mr. Bashkov, in part of the presentation, you can see some of the great work that he did last year along with Ms. Cummings in trying to make sure that we were communicating well with everybody that was involved in the school district and the community. As far as the school starting several days later, I didn't say that I was recommending it started several days later. I was just talking to the board about some options we have, and clearly, that's not my goal to recommend that it has to start later. We understand the impact, the negative impact that has on parents, so the goal would be to start when other students begin on the first day of school. Ms. Mordecai?
I just wanted to add to that. A few years ago, one of our district goals was to improve communication with the community, and I know the community at large sometimes says, oh, we have no idea what you're doing in the school district. I don't believe you can say that now, because every time you turn on Facebook, there's always a post, there's an article, there are many articles in the Chronicle, Essex Daily Online, the Star Ledger, and we have all kinds of PR activities that are going on. Yes, tap into West Orange. Hello, Mr. Grossman. Tap into West Orange. And I know this year, we actually won a public relations award from the state. I used to be on the public relations committee for several years, and Mrs. Lab also spent some time on the committee as well, but now the PR liaisons are Mr. Robertson and Mr. Schwartzbaum. But I know Perry has been working very, very hard, and so has Cynthia, and when I was in the committee, I literally got, I don't know, two or three articles every day from Cynthia to review and send out, and in addition, some of our students are interning with them and learning all about, you know, using their journalism skills that they're gaining here in West Orange High School, as well as the students who participate and write on sports, and, you know, they're just doing an amazing job. And when I get phone calls from other districts that say, oh, how come you guys are always in the papers? What are you doing? You know, I see something positive all the time about the school district, and I tell them what we're doing. And there are a lot of districts who are doing just that, because it's, this is the twenty-first century, almost no one gets a newspaper subscription anymore. They're online, or they're on TV. We also have a YouTube channel, and we have a lot of things going on. So this was in an effort to increase our communication with the community.
I'd also like to add to that, when you take the array of services that Mr. Rutske outlined and Ms. Mordecai outlined, and you multiply that times the sheer volume that we have to communicate and respond on in terms of the number of buildings, number of classes, number of courses, number of programs, athletic, academic, arts, it is a massive and almost overwhelming volume. And as a marketing professional, I can tell you, if, there are many who would not do what they do for the amount they do it. It's really a huge volume, and they do, both Perry and Cynthia do, Cynthia do really an amazing job. It's exhausting. So just want to congratulate them, you know, that's why we got this PR award, and it's really a huge undertaking.
I just wanted to comment on the potential for the delay of the school opening. It would be the preschool only, certainly not the elementary, but just to give you a point of historical reference, when, geez, back in ninety-four, ninety-five, the kindergarten classes used to start ten days afterwards, and the theory at that time was, oh, they need time to readjust. Then it was reduced down to five days after the regular, the upperclassmen, if you will, started, and then it was three days, and finally, now the kindergarten, of course, start when everybody else started. It was bedlam, as you can imagine, with transportation and the kids moving in the middle of the day. It was just, it was a nightmare. So again, I just wanted to let you know, in case there was any confusion, that it was potentially for preschool. It's not a done deal. We don't know for sure yet. We just need to get, the teachers have a monumental job, actually, as Mr. Rutske indicated. The preschool, they're busy little people. Their classrooms are like a lot of stuff going on in there, and you have teachers who have been in there for like twenty years, and they're going to have to pick their stuff up, not to mention the teachers who are at Redwood and Gregory. Then you have the other move inside of Kelly, so the fourth grade, for instance, LD class will be in the hallway with the other fourth grade teachers, so that means somebody's going to be moving down to the new wing that has been, well, I guess it's still kind of new, that's been vacated by the preschool. So there's going to be a lot of internal moving. The contract, it's still not signed, so there's no, we could not, in good faith, start talking to people about this is going to happen, because Mr. Rutske and the attorneys from both the church and from the school district have been going back and forth on a very complicated contract. So nothing is being done in secret. This is being done to expedite it, and if we don't move on this, we will lose this site, because they have told us we will lose the site, they will find another tenant. So again, looking at what facilities are available in West Orange, what facilities would cost us over a million dollars to refurbish- what facilities would cost us over a million dollars to refurbish or renovate for our needs? And just as a renter, why would we put a million dollars into a school that's not ours? That's kind of crazy. But again, those are some of the reasons as to why this is what it is. So, I just wanted to give that background. Thank you, Ms. Mordecai.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'd like to amplify what Mrs. Lab was saying. When we looked at the, the fact that we've been through this about eight times in five or six years, and, and the opportunities that we missed, and the fact that this one is not only perfectly built out with just minor modifications, the amount that we have to invest in it is minimal. And, uh, the facility is, uh, is absolutely immaculate. So, this is just such a huge opportunity. I'd really hate to, uh, to miss it again. But we hear what you're saying, loud and clear, about the timing and the pressure it puts on parents and the notification. We'll try to minimize that. And thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I'll move that.
I'll second. And I want to say, welcome to the world, Phoebe.
Have a great night, everyone. Get home safe.